We are back at the Chapo Town Hall. Tonight is a town meeting where apparently on the agenda they will be talking about recording employees inside the town hall. So we're gonna find out what that's all about. Looks like the door is unlocked now. Are we good to come in?
Yeah. You can come in. There is no video recording in council chambers though.
They doesn't say anything about that when the township law was.
I'm sorry.
I can pick that up for me.
Hello.
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 We're on time. I know. Alright. Good evening, everyone. Regular meeting at council Monday, September twenty second, twenty twenty five, six thirty P M in the civic council chambers. Kindly turn off all cell phones for the duration of meeting or place them on mute, please. Call meeting order that township Chapo does hereby call regular council meeting on Monday, September twenty second, twenty twenty five, toward six thirty P M. Indigenous land acknowledgement, municipality Chapo situated in the Sichuan Treaty Lands and Mishwati Cree's people treaty night area and recognizes neighboring First Nation of Brunswick House, Chapo Greenie, Chapo Jipway, Mishpecotton, and Missin Abbey Creek. We acknowledge along the history of the First Nation and meeting people in Ontario and show respect to them today. Proving the agenda where as member of council been presented with an agenda for the regular council meeting Monday, September twenty second, twenty twenty five, will be resolved if the agenda be adopted as presented. Can I please have a move?
Oh no.
Moved by Lisi, seconded by Alex. Any additions or deletions?
If we could amend it to add one item to in camera, it's a legal matter.
Okay. So.
So it's as amended?
Okay.
And the reason for what you can do, it's a legal.
Okay. Any further? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay. Okay, disclose your pecuniary interests. May I request for any pecuniary interest to be declared for the record? Do we have any?
No.
Okay, hearing none. Number four. Financial variances to the budget update. I'd like at this time to introduce our treasurer, Les Jones. Could you please present us?
Good evening. So thank you for the opportunity to come before you once again. And offered to you, of course, in the agenda package in the lead up to the meeting, the slide deck that is here now. And Judy, if you like, you could flip to the first slide. So what I was thinking about tonight, at least to begin with here, the format of the slides is similar to what you've seen before. So the first couple of slides capture total revenues and total expenditures across the major divisions, our operations. And then the following slides are broken down at the department level, so you'll see council, administration, protectors, persons, property, and so on. My initial thought was instead of me, you know, going through each slide and grabbing each and every item, what I would do is give you some overviews or highlights of it at the outset, given that you had a chance to look at it. And if there are areas that you would like us to flip the slides to, or specific questions that have arisen in your review in advance of the meeting, either myself or Rajan or Judy be able to offer some clarification for you. So what I thought I would do is just simply point out that by virtue of the word variance, what we're saying is there's gonna be displayed here differences between what we've budgeted and what we've experienced year to date across both the revenue and the expenditure categories. And at a high level, the variances are driven by a number of primary factors. So the first thing would be, we actually experience an actual increase or decrease in either revenue or expenditure. Those things can occur for a variety of reasons. And there may be some of those that are founded here, but on a modest scale, there's nothing that's in here that would look to say there's a extreme driver pushing a budgetary variance, either with a revenue going way up or a revenue coming way down. And the same can be said for expenditures. But having said that, there are a number of things that are simply as a result of timing or seasonality. So first piece would be, we're just approaching the end of the third quarter of fiscal. So what happens here is that there are gonna be costs that are spread out through this budget that are fixed in nature. So contractual costs like Ontario Clean Water Agency, policing, D SAB, public health, impact. So those items will all be underspent relative to budget. We're also going to see areas such as energy costs be under when you look at this comparative budget, simply because we're eight twelfths of the way through the year in terms of looking at the report. What we look for in these areas though is to try and look at them year over year to determine are we in line with where we saw ourselves last year. So the example that I just cited, energy, we're in very, very, very close to the same level as last year. We didn't exceed budget last year. We don't expect to exceed budget this year. So that forms part of what we do when we look at this, trying to determine are we going to be heading along a trend line that will maybe push something into an area where it needs some attention now. Third item would be seasonal impacts. So of course, some of our spending is driven as a result of the season that we fall into. So for example, we would see winter control expenditures beginning to spike. So the purchase of winter sand, winter salt, some additional contractor rentals to be hired for snow removals. Some of those kinds of things will affect the expenditures in this type of presentation format as well. We might see some things driven by timing, in terms of timing delays. So for example, we might have found opportunities in previous years to get some of those types of expenditures done earlier, but because we rely on external suppliers for some of this, that's not always possible to see it happen at the same time every year. Another piece of it would be, of course, there are some things that are fixed in timing because the cycle is quarterly as well. So we have quarterly billings for utility billings, those are yet to come. We get quarterly grant advances, some of those are yet to come. We get quarterly invoicing from some of our suppliers like Ontario Clean Water Agency, some of that is still to come. So those are some of the types of elements that will affect the results. The other thing would be, of course, and if there was something that was arriving in a significant way and would have, of course, required council consultation, you would have been made aware of it already. But I can think of things like, let's say, we had a change in staffing levels because of some reorganization changes. Those kinds of decisions in year could affect some of the results that you did see here. But they again would be the types of things that would be unplanned and would be brought to your attention at the point in time where it occurred. So those would be, in general terms, some of the primary drivers that would lead to the variations that you see in here in terms of operating to budget. The thing that we would like to say in terms of the reviews that carried out with Judy and myself and Rajan in terms of looking where we're at, we don't see annual alarming trends in terms of what's developing here. We think that our progress is going to allow us to remain on track for the budget. We may continue to see some improved results in certain areas. It's always welcome in terms of improvements either for forecast revenue streams that are driven by user fees. So they can fluctuate, of course, with demand, so you could have better results at the arena with more rentals. You could see more activity at the airport than expected. You could see more riders shifting the transit bus than expected, more building permit activities. All of those kinds of things could continue to materialize and then continue to lead to improvements. And I would say that in terms of looking at major expenditure categories that I would classify as operating, so salaries and benefits, look doing on track, there's no alarming trends in terms of overtime. I mentioned energy previously, materials and supplies are looking in line. We do see, as we do in every year, some small fluctuations with inside areas where maybe something is, you know, attracting a little more spending than it had been previously. But Rajan and I have looked at those areas, in particular as it relates to some of the larger material and supply lines. And we're confident that within other areas of spending in those categories, we can make the necessary allocations so there won't be any jolts or bumps, if you will, in terms of the results in manufacturing. So I thought, I mean, unless Judy or Rajan missed anything?
No, we called her in on a specific question.
Yeah.
I just called up the expenses sheet. And you'll see a long orange line there for environmental services. We did intend to have the Dufferin project moving forward this year. Due to risk related to the seasonal climate change that we've got coming with the snow soon to fly and we had water that had to sit in tanks outside. We decided to, with the interaction with the engineers and the contractor and the subcontractors, we made a decision to push off the actual construction work till next year. We'll be able to start the construction work earlier in the year. We had delays with getting our permit to take water. Actually, kind of interesting, our permit to take water, they changed the way it works and it's less work now. You don't have to fill out the permit to take water. But the other avenue that we had to do on getting a settlement report actually took longer than what a permit to take water would have taken. So there was no time benefit there. And being the fact that we're now into September, it's just too late to start the field work at this time. So we will see that coming back up again next year as we start the work and hopefully late spring.
If I may, just on that one as well, one of the other factors that affect these lines and areas where there's reserve fund contributions, we book our reserve fund contributions at the end of the year, for the results and activities are completed. Because there may be opportunities, for example, with reallocations in budgets not to draw down reserve funds, so we can leave it in the pack. So if I was to look at as well, a contributing factor to the difference between the year to date and the budgeted number for environmental services, a large part of that as well as the fact that the reserve fund contributions haven't been booked yet either. Because as we finish getting through the capital, major meetings, and consulting will reconcile that and then book the numbers. If there's gonna be, you know, an increase or an excessive drawdown because of something that is, not an excessive, an increase in the drawdown because of unanticipated changes.
And then the next slides are the individual departments and their current status. I think council has had the opportunity to see that in your sheets.
Any other questions, Les?
Well, I just think like, you know, to leave it to you in terms of looking at this piece around some assurances is that, you know, we look at this monthly, you know, once we get through the cycle and push the pieces through, Rajan or Judy may come to me looking for additional background information when an expenditure is contemplated. So what we do look to do is to not, you know, wait for a quarter to pass, if you will, to look at it. We're monitoring it regularly. And then, as I say, we would look to respond in the moment if it's something that is, you know, relatively minor in nature, we're tracking it. If it's something that requires your approval, of course, it would be brought to your attention, so.
Next council meeting, can you just bring that little Excel sheet just to our task position?
Yeah, well, actually, I gave it to Judy.
Actually, it's been circulated.
Okay, I have a chance to look at it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions for Les?
Right. So follow up on Dufferin, moving into next year, are there any grants that need to be reapplied for, is all the funding carried over?
So if I may, Judy, so right now the grants intact, right? Because the substantial completion date for the small grant that we received for it sunsets at the end of twenty twenty six. And we're also carrying the accumulated unused formula-based grant for that project. So again, it's something we can carry over. The thing that I'm monitoring with that right now, of course, is typically those programs will look at project progress across Ontario. And they know that, you know, there are often many reasons for projects, and I'm not suggesting this for hours. But there are often many reasons why projects may in fact, you know, become delayed. So the majority of times, they do open windows that would allow you to apply for an extension. So I'm just monitoring that now. I'm not looking to apply for an extension, but keeping in contact with Rajan and Judy. I'll be made aware of, you know, the actual project progress to ensure that, okay, it will be completed. If it looks like we are anticipating something that may lead to an overlap into twenty twenty seven, I'd look to take advantage then of the window and request a grant extension, of course, presenting a case, if you will, for why the the extension would be required.
Thanks, Les, and I wrote down no alarming trends, so always good to hear that, but thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
We have the capital as well, which council really seemed to identify with our charts, so we've used it again. And I just offer, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them regarding the capital.
Anyone? Alright. Good presentation. Thanks, Les.
Thank you.
Les, good information. I'm glad to have a chairman in the right direction, taking the time when we went into it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, committee of adjustment, review consent of agenda consisting of six point one, council committee meeting minutes, and six point one one, regular council meeting minutes on Monday, September eighth, twenty twenty five. Now therefore be resolved if council, township, and township hereby approve. Council meeting minutes for Monday, September eighth, twenty twenty five. Please get a mover.
I'll move.
Moved by Paul, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Kathy. Alright, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay. Okay, seven business, seven point one. Amendment to budget. Fire department requests for pagers and jaws for life equivalent. That township Chapo does hereby receive the C A O's report entitled, fire department request for pages and jaws of life dated September twenty second, twenty twenty five for information. And that council does hereby approve the purchase of, question mark, at a cost of seven hundred dollars and sixty cents from Spectrum Two Thousand Communications Group. And furthermore, the council does or does not approve the purchase of the jaws of life in the amount of blank from blank. And furthermore, that the pages of jaws of life were not included in the annual budget for twenty twenty five. And council decrees this purchase to be an amendment to the budget. Can I get a mover? And seconded, open is for discussion. Moved by Kathy, seconded by Lisi. Open for discussion. So we're either, I guess you guys wanna work our way down?
Yeah.
Okay, so pagers. How many do, what was the ask? I think it was five?
Five.
The ask is five.
I was gonna ask.
Five, Graham, just a second. Okay.
So just question on that, so what is the state of our other pagers? Are, do we need a buffer? Do we need additional pagers as?
Come on up, Graham.
We're good. We'll be good for a while.
Okay.
Sorry.
Five.
For those of you that don't know in the audience, this is our fire chief, Graham.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, we currently have twenty four pagers. And we have an opportunity to have twenty nine staff.
And we are, we are short just a couple, but we are also short a few firemen that will be hoping to hire soon.
So is five gonna cover, so do you need six?
No, we're good.
Five.
Five is good.
Okay, so there we go. So we got a five in there. Anybody posted that? Okay. Furthermore, council, so now we're down to the jaws of life. So what was the number for the jaws of life?
That was forty two.
Forty four thousand prior to tax.
Okay. And who is the distributor that we would like to purchase it from?
Do you remember off the top of your head? Okay, let me look it up.
Code four, code, code, code four?
Code four.
I thought you said go for it. Okay, code, go for it, no, hang on.
Code four.
Okay, that was forty four.
And it was forty four thousand dollars even.
Okay. Discussion on jaws of life. Questions, comments?
No, thank you for your information. I'm in favor of a range of, I would say forty five to fifty, knowing that the way funds committed to support that.
Alex?
Yeah, I'm good up to fifty thousand.
Okay.
Hundred.
Yeah, the report was helpful, so yes.
Okay. And thank you for bringing this matter to our attention. And you tell. Just give us one more second. Furthermore, pagers. Council decrees that purchases be an amendment to the budget.
Yes.
So all in favor? Carrie. And you got yourself some pagers and the jaws of life. Thank you for putting in the work, Graham. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Alright, seven point two. Winter already. Twenty twenty six Case of the North Winter Carnival. Township Chapo does hereby receive Leisure and Cultural Services Manager report entitled the twenty twenty six Case of the North Carnival for information. And that council does hereby approve the event budget of twenty nine thousand, six hundred and forty five dollars. Could I please get a mover?
I'll move.
Moved by Paul, seconded by?
I'll second.
Alex. Alright, any discussion? I think you got this one under control now. We don't even talk about it many more. You did a good job last year. We're gonna redo it again. Alright, all in favor? Carrie, congratulations. Seven point three. Dehumidifier pricing for the arena. That council township Chapo does hereby receive the operation directors report entitled recommendation to purchase a new dehumidifier for the A W Moore Arena for information. And that council does recognize procurement obligations detailed in the bylaw twenty twenty four twelve for this purchase were adhered through the use of canoe procurement group. And furthermore, that township does approve the purchase of an M S twenty six hundred electric dehumidifier from Simco in the amount of forty eight thousand, three hundred and eighty five dollars and eighty nine cents. Could I please get a mover? Moved by Lisi, seconded by Kathy. Read their package. Alright, all in favor? Carrie. Congratulations, dehumidifier. Two in row. Alright. Seven point four. Videotaping staff and patrons in municipal buildings. That township Chapo does hereby receive the C A O's report entitled videotape taping staff and patrons in municipal buildings dated September twenty second, twenty twenty five for information. And where its council is concerned about the welfare and safety of staff and patrons visiting municipal spaces. And that council does hereby approve the C A O to work on a bylaw to restrict use of video recording municipal buildings without prior consent. And furthermore, that a penalty be in place in the bylaw if videotaping is conducted without permission and a fine can be imposed on the individual through the bylaw enforcement officer. Alright, can I get a mover? Moved by Lisi, seconded by?
I'll second.
Alex. Any discussion? Questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Carrie. Alright, seven point five, expanding the administration department. That township township does hereby receive the C A O's report entitled expanding administration department dated September twenty second, twenty five for information. And that council does hereby approve the purchase of additional furniture in the amount of no more than four thousand dollars to equip the administration department for increase in staffing with new intern. And furthermore, that the staff will investigate to find the best pricing on the furniture detailed in this report. Can I please get a mover?
I'll move.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Alex. Any discussion or questions?
Just a question, do we have a timeframe when we would like the intent to start? I'm just trying to understand the dollars, like mid-year.
Yes, so through you, Mr. Mayor. We are hoping to do the posting later this week after council has a discussion about the qualities of the person that they're looking for. And so as soon as we can potentially get somebody in the chairs is what our goal is.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carrie. Alright, seven point three, Chapo services request for handy bus. That township Chapo does hereby want to support the seniors in our community. And that council does hereby approve the use of the handy transit bus for the Fall Fair on Friday, October seventeenth from four to seven P M and Saturday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty five, from eleven A M to three P M. Can I please get a mover?
I'll move.
Okay, I'll second.
I'm gonna go with that handles up quick.
Paul second.
Okay, Paul seconds. Any discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carrie. Alright, seven point seven, request for rebate on renewed use for Gala by any pre-legal giveout. That the council township and capital does hereby approve the cost reduction of of the hall rental fees for the Gilbert family gala. And that the council wishes to recognize and appreciate the donation of the jaws of life for the Chapo Fire Department. Could I get a mover, please?
I'll move that we deduct it by a hundred percent, given that all proceeds go to the fire department.
Okay, sorry, need to get a motion on the floor first. Moved by Paul, seconded by Kathy. Open for discussion, go ahead.
I recommend a hundred percent.
Okay, any further? Okay, I'm, I'm in favor just as long as we credit back from the fire department budget onto Carols, just so it doesn't go under. Yeah, in that way it keeps all the things even. Cause there is a lot of staffing charges and stuff like that, so if we do the credit, because we're getting those funds, then we should credit back for that, less than fifteen percent like we normally do.
Yeah.
Just to keep it fair in the books. Everybody in favor?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? Okay. All in favor? Carrie. Almost have it. You gotta make a mistake on one. Seven point eight, additional asphalt cost by year construction invoice that township Chapo does hereby do C A O's operation director report entitled, additional asphalt cost by year, September twenty second, twenty twenty five for information. That council does hereby approve the invoice for pioneer construction amount of six hundred and seventy eight thousand, six hundred and sixty six dollars and seventy eight cents plus H S T. Can I please have a mover?
I'll move.
Moved by Paul, seconded by?
I'll second.
Kathy. Alright, any discussion and questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Carrie. Alright, none at tonight's meetings, nine resolutions, none correspondence. You have the correspondence before you, A to E. Are there any items that council would like to extract for discussion? Hearing none. That council Chapo receives correspondence from the September twenty sixth, twenty twenty five council agenda, where is the following extracted for discussion? Which is none. Can I get a mover? Kathy, seconded by Lisi. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Carrie. Alright, in camera, adjourned to in camera session, township Chapo. Move to in camera session, Monday, September twenty second, at six fifty seven P M for the voluntary matters, in camera session meeting minutes for regular council meeting of September eighth, twenty twenty five. And personal matters about identifiables in. individual including municipal and or local or employees pursuant to Ontario Municipal Act section two, three ninety-two E and human resources. Three items, and then there was?
One legal.
And then one legal matter that was added at the beginning. All right.
Thanks for watching. If you want to send us a story, you can send us an email to n o c audits at gmail dot com. Don't forget to subscribe and see you next time.